Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission on Tuesday, February 20th at 6:00 PM to order. Good evening. All right, I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission on Tuesday, February 20th at 6:00 PM to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Becker?
Here.
Moflarity?
Here.
Can you Graham?
Here.
Stoker?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
Maxwell? McMahon?
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. At this point, I'm going to ask for approval of the agenda. If there are any additions or deletions, motion to approve the agenda as submitted. So move, we have a motion on the floor from Wright, second?
Seconded.
Second from Becker. All in favor of approving the agenda as submitted, say aye?
Aye.
I'll pull the same side. The agenda is approved. At this point in the meeting, I'm going to ask for an approval from the minutes from the February 5th meeting. A motion to approve, approve the minutes as submitted from the February 5th minute?
So moved, Stoker.
Motion on the floor from Stoker?
Aye, second.
Second from Moflarity. All in favor of accepting the minutes as approved, accepted, say aye?
Aye.
I'll pull the same side. The minutes from last meeting are accepted and approved. This is the public participation portion of the meeting. If there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak of something that's not on the agenda, we ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record to talk about something that is not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, I'm going to move to new business. We have one item on the agenda tonight for new misses. It's a public hearing, a petition by the DeKalb Community Unit School District 428 for the rezoning of the subject site at 530 Charter Street from the MFR1 multi-family residential district to the SFR2 single-family residential district, and approval of a special use permit for a community residence large facility. Is there somebody from the audience from the school district that wants to give a presentation? Come up to the podium and state your names and addresses for the record, please.
Great. Good evening. My name is Kyle Gertis. I'm the Director of Student Services with the DeKalb School District.
And I'm Lisa Becker. I'm the Assistant Director of Student Services for the DeKalb School District. Good evening.
And joined by Armire Doka, you don't have to get up Armire, but just Director of Business and Finance. So, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to be here tonight. We are really excited about something that we've been working on as a school district for longer than I've been in the district, which is going on 15 years. And that is looking to try and find a off, what we call an off-campus location for our 18 to 22 transition program. Currently, the program is housed at DeKalb High School. And the program really is, when we talk about special education, sometimes we talk about the bookends of that. So, early childhood, meaning services and programming that's available to our youngest kiddos. On the other side of that, after through 12th grade, there's our 18 to 22 transition program. And our 18 to 22 program is really designed to help young adults with developmental disabilities and/or intellectual disabilities develop those vocational and independent living skills. So that way, when they turn 22 and are no longer eligible for services within public school setting, that they are ideally set up to be as independent as possible as adults. And then, of course, the ability to access kind of post-secondary adult services if needed. Best practice for us to be able to provide the best possible programming for students in this program is to really immerse them into the community of which they already live, in some cases, already work. But to really have those real-world applications to practice those vocational skills. We just can't model it very well in a high school classroom setting. A lot of communities around us have kind of moved to this model and have opened, you know, in various ways, transitional programming that is embedded within residential or, in some cases, community college settings. Because that is the most inclusive environment that we can have for our young adults with disabilities. The, this is, like I said, this has been something the district has worked on for a number of years. We vetted a lot of different opportunities over those years, looking at everything from potential locations at Northern Illinois University, Kishawaki Education Consortium, or Kishawaki College. We've looked at other residential options, as well as even looked into the potential for, like, a business storefront type of option for us. For a lot of different reasons, those haven't panned out. Some of them because of financial restrictions, some honestly COVID threw a wrench into our plans just four years ago. And it wasn't until relatively recently where we went to our school board and asked for their support to kind of pursue all the options that we could. But ultimately, it led us to the property on 530 Charter Street. I really appreciate the community. We've gotten a few different emails with questions and voicing some concerns over the program and what it would mean maybe to the neighborhood. And my hope, I guess, tonight is to kind of speak to some of those things, just to maybe dispel some of the misconceptions about this program. Again, I do just want to highlight, this is a program that, over the last several years in the district, we've housed no more than 13 students in at a time. It's actually been much lower than 13, but 13 is the number we use because, under school code, that's the maximum number of students that we could have in this program with a one teacher to one assistant ratio. We could go beyond that, but it would require additional staffing, both with certified teachers as well as instructional assistants that could help with supervision and other safety concerns, just making sure that everybody can navigate things appropriately. We really try to utilize public transport as much as possible. So, what you're most likely going to see moving forward is not necessarily school buses going down the road, but you're going to see things that we, young adults with disabilities or adults with disability use, such as VAC, TransVAC, or even city busing. It's also possible that, you know, not out of the realm of possibility, that maybe they could even transport themselves or have an adult caregiver transport them to and from the program. We, I guess, don't really have, when we think about how our program is operated in our high school, we have never had concerns of student safety or staff safety in that program based on the student needs. This is a program that really is more about developing independent functional living skills, how to take care of an apartment, how to brush your teeth, how to get up on time, read a bus schedule. This is not a program that really has a lot of significant behavioral supports that are required to make sure that students are successful and safe. That said, it does require supervision and teaching, and that is what the program is currently staffed to do. I think I'm going to stop there and open it up to questions, if there are questions, or I know there's a PowerPoint or kind of some things being presented, if there's any questions about that.
Do we have a presentation from the city?
Yeah, the staff report's in your packet. This very thorough introduction to the program by Kyle. The staff report goes in a little more detail on the zoning, what they're requesting. It's currently zoned MFR1 multi-family residential. They're requesting a single-family residential zoning that will match the surrounding area. So it's currently multi-family in the middle of a single-family zoning. And approving a special use permit for a community, how we define it in the UDO, community residence large, and there's a community residence small, based on the number of students. So the UDO defines that as specialized residential care home servicing unrelated persons with disabilities. The large facilities are more than eight, and small is eight or fewer. So, in a small community residence is actually permitted in a single-family district. A large one is a special use. So, they're proposing 13 students. If they had eight, there would be a permitted use. There'd be no zoning process at all. So the site showed up earlier, was a childcare center since the mid-'90s. It was rezoned in 1994 to multi-family, and a special use was approved for a childcare center. It's operated since that way. Prior to that, it was a church. I don't know how many years, but it was a church prior to that. So, it's been kind of a commercial use for several decades there. And Kyle went over the program, what they're proposing, 10 to 13 students, age 18 to 22. There'll be no overnight stays at the facility. They have a staff about three to seven, so pretty good ratio, student-to-teacher ratio there. Hours, typical school day. The hours are noted in the report, 7 to 4 PM, Monday through Friday. The staff will be there a little bit longer than the students. They'll operate a four-week summer schedule, too, during the day. Be licensed by the state. And any permits for work inside, that will be covered by the DeKalb County Regional Office of Education. They'll conduct annual inspections, too. The school district's maintenance grounds, staff will maintain the property and the grounds. The building is, there was a site plan submitted, shows existing building, about 4,800 square feet. There's a parking lot behind there. Accommodates about 18 vehicles. There will be a couple handicap spaces added to that. The site plan shows that. So the parking meets the, one of the conditions is to, they'll have to stripe the parking a little bit closer, add the handicap spaces. And looking at this, as I mentioned, in terms of transportation, will be by bus, van, or their own form of transportation, or TransVAC, or Guardian. Compared to a daycare center, we looked at this as a lower of an impact in terms of noise and traffic. Be less traffic there than compared to kids being dropped off. And, you know, kids playing outside added to the noise, of course. There is a chain link fence that goes the back of the lot and along the two sides up towards the middle or back of the home. We're recommending some more pictures. That's the back of the parking lot, looking at the play area that'd be removed. That's the back of the structure. The south end of the site, there's an existing chain link fence. One of the conditions recommended is to make that a privacy fence, so they'll have to add slats in there to make it private. We thought that'd be the good to-do. It's, it kind of meets, brings it up to more provision with the code, the UDO. There's, as you can see, parking that backs up to that. So we thought, screen the south parking lot with upgrades to the fence. They can do that, or take the fence down and put up a six-foot-high solid fence. They can do either one. And the fence on the two sides will remain. I think the fence in front will probably be removed, I assume. Four-foot fence will be removed up front. I listed the standards for zoning map amendments. The complies, our comp plan calls for commercial uses there, kind of reflecting the past use as a daycare center. We believe the impacts will be, you know, not negative. There'll be no less than the childcare center. Won't hurt property values. It's been a commercial use since the mid-'90s, and even a church prior to that. Be less traffic, less noise than the childcare center. Adequate utilities already serve the site, so we feel it meets the rezoning and special use standards that are in the code. Public responses, we did get a few of those. One that was in your packet from Wilder Ryan of 636 Charter Street. Which is right here, I believe. She indicated concern about her safety. Staff from the school district did try and contact her. She didn't, we didn't get a response. Since the posting of the agenda, you got, we got two emails, and the copies are provided to you. One was from Mr. Tom Burke of 504 Charter, which I think is a lot or two just off the screen here to the west. Indicated he objected with additional traffic and negative effects on the property values. Also received an email over the weekend from Allison Anderson of 529 Spring Avenue. That's a lot directly south of the site, right here. It backs up to the rear yards, touch each other. Objected to the request, noted safety, property values, and noise. So those are part of the record. Staff would recommend approval. Sample motions prepared for the commission. Four conditions, again, the establishment of six-foot-high privacy fence along the south lot line. Prior to occupancy of the structure, parking lots should be upgraded with striping and adding two handicap spaces. Condition also, no overnight stays would be allowed, and the maximum number of students shall be 13. So they can't go over that, and they indicated if they do that, they'd have to change program or add staff. So, a max of 13 students. And the special use approved in '94 for the childcare center, that will expire once occupancy of this use is done. So, down the road, if the school district leaves, somebody can't come back in and establish a daycare center without going through the zoning process. So, kind of protect neighborhood from a different use coming back in the past. So, that's the report. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Dan. So we've got the city gave their presentation. At this point of the meeting, I'm going to ask if there's anybody from the public, and I know that I have a few speaker request forms. If there's anybody, this is the portion of the meeting where anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item can do so. I'm going to call you up. You can come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and then state your issues. The first request I have is from Allison Anderson. You can come up to the podium.
Hi, my name's Allison Anderson. I'm at 529 Spring Avenue. My property butts right up behind the daycare as of right now. My major concern would be behavioral issues. I have a three-year-old daughter. We play outside. We play in the backyard. I understand there might be a fence, but at the same time, it's a concern. Also, the daycare was very noisy. We did have to call quite a few times because of it. So, even though there would be less traffic, you say, they say there'd be less noise, again, another big concern. People would be playing their music as they'd be dropping off their kids. I could literally hear it through my house. Sometimes my walls would be rattling. But yeah, those are just my two major concerns, mostly behavioral. Me and my daughter play outside all summer.
Very good. All right. I have a, can I ask a question at this point?
Sure.
The daycare that was there, how many people were at the daycare, you know, on a, any given day?
We would say maybe three adults.
And there were, but I mean, all clients and, I mean, we're looking at...
Maybe 10 to 15 kids.
10 to 15 kids?
Mm-hmm.
And then we're looking at something? Maybe a little more, okay. Okay. So your concerns are the safety and the noise?
Yes.
All right. Does somebody want, from the school district, want to address this now?
So, I guess maybe I'll just start off by saying, like, our intent as a district and as a program is to be the best neighbors we can possibly be. So, for you or anybody else in the neighborhood, as concerns are brought forward, we want to be responsive to those. I'll start with the safety concern. Again, the type of program that this provides students is not a program that specializes in supporting behavioral needs or significant social, emotional needs of students. It really is for developmentally disabled adults or young adults, and to help with those independent functioning skills. We, as a district, have a couple of different options when it comes to 18 to 22 programming for students. And the reason is, is we know we need to differentiate level of support based on the needs of each student. So we have not only our 18 to 22 program that we're looking to move into the community, we also have Project Search, which is connected to Northwestern Medicine. And then we also have other options with different therapeutic day schools that offer a similar level, or a similar transition program that provides much more higher-level needs for students. The students that we would be having in this program would be ones that we feel are in a position to where they can be independent to varying degrees, contributing members of our community, both living independently, but also working. And again, I do just want to highlight, these are students that currently live and work in our community already.
A question for you, Kyle. The program currently is housed right now at DeKalb High School?
Yep. The 18 to 22 program is, there's a couple variations of programming within that band that we offer.
Any issues that, in the last year, two years, with safety from your, these students affecting the other students at the high school?
No. Nothing significant. No.
Thank you.
Yep.
One of the concerns that you had was essentially privacy for you and your daughter. Two things. One, I would assume that the students, is that abuts the parking lot? I'm assuming that the students really will not be out and about during the day, just hanging around. But also, as you're looking at the fencing that Dan was discussing, what is the vibe, what is the likelihood, or what is the willingness on the part of the school district to actually put up a privacy fence that would allow for additional privacy for your southern neighbors?
True.
The school district's agreed to all the conditions, and that's one of the conditions.
And that is one of the conditions that you will do, the privacy fence.
That's something they will have to do.
So that should alleviate that concern, then? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kyle.
Just to your other point, too, with the, I know there is a playground in the back lot, parking lot there, from what I remember. Very different than a childcare center. Our young adults will be coming into the building. They won't be like a recess or things outside like that. And we would most likely be having drop-off probably in the front of the home as opposed to in the back. So even like TransVAC or other means of transportation, we would most likely have that drop-off in the front unless there was some need for accessibility to get in through a ramp that we would have in the back. So it should be different than the childcare in terms of noise, especially on the back end of the building.
Very good.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thank you, Kyle. I do have one more speaker request form. It was a Craig, Greg Perkins. Greg, if you come on up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and tell us your concerns.
Evening. Greg Perkins, Fourth Ward, 152 Devonshire. Thanks for all the legwork, Dan, for the package you guys put together. It's pretty explanatory. To me, I kind of have just two questions. So number one, looking at things a little differently, are we basically opening another school in the neighborhood? And then, secondly, is the school district buying the property?
All right. Those are your two questions. Are we opening another school? Is the school district buying the property?
Yep.
Kyle, do you want to, or Amar?
Yeah, Armire Doka, Finance Director. I don't know if you, can you call this a additional school, or it's more of a program? It's only 13 students. We are going to renovate it. There is going to be renovation for it. And we are looking to do a two-year lease-to-purchase agreement. Normally, that's how you would do it for renovation purposes. We want to start the program at January 2025, so. So I, I don't know if there's anything more to add to that. It's, I think it's more of a program. We don't see it as an additional school. It's, it's opening up space for our high school to add more classes to the high school, and then removing a different age group from the high school, putting them on a different location. This is a trend that's been happening with other schools as well. So other districts, I don't know if you have any references, but other school districts are doing the same thing, where they're removing an age group away from the high school age groups, so.
Okay. Thanks, Amar. Okay. All right. Is there anybody else in the audience that wants to speak on this issue? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public, public participation portion of this meeting. I'm going to open up to the commission for any discussion, questions, comments.
Dan, I'm assuming that, other than the possibility of going back to a preschool, if they, the school district decide not to continue with the program or it's not working, anything beyond that, would have to come to the Planning and Zoning Commission to get approval anyway, right?
Well, no, they'd be a single-family zoning, so if they didn't go back to daycare, they'd have to come back for a hearing. But if it was some permitted use in the single-family home?
Right.
Single-family, that would be allowed. Not much else would be. They'd have to file the single-family zoning.
Right.
What's permitted or special use.
Okay.
Any special use would be a hearing.
Something like early, early childhood development, would that be inclusive in this approval? I know DeKalb has an early, early childhood development program, but if they had a need to expand upon something like that, would they?
I mean, the school district and then adding, expanding the program?
Right.
So to speak. It's defined as community residence large, and I think that's with development disabilities. So early childhood education would not fit that definition.
Okay. I, the reason I ask, again, I think part of the issue you're dealing with with the noise is that you have 15 kids who are out playing on the playground and screaming and hollering, right?
It was them dropping off.
Oh, they're dropping off?
They drop off, they blare and whatever you say, and it would be radiating through my house.
Got it. I imagine it'd be quite different with, you know, 10 to 13 young adults who are being dropped off. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Thanks. Thank you.
Allison, the six-foot-high privacy fence, do you think that would help your situation?
I think so.
Okay.
Where would it be put? Because the fence chain link attaches to both our neighbors. So if we took our chain link out and we put just a wooden fence there, our chain link would be...
What they probably will do, or could do, is just add slats to the fence, the current fence. Along, and the fence is shown here, it's right on the property line. Put slats in it, that would make it privacy. You couldn't see through it. I think that's what... Well, six foot's the maximum height of the fence in residential in the rear yard, so that's...
That's the highest you can go.
It sounds like their students are not going to be outside very much. They'd be inside most of the time.
But ingress and ingress will be through the front, too, right? You're explaining that the students will be coming and going through the front door, not...
So, ideally, yeah. So if we think of like TransVAC dropping off in the front, but if students have a need for a ramp, that will be located in the back. So I can't say it's 100% front, but we'll have the option.
Okay. All right.
So, there's homes throughout town already with something similar, Opportunity House.
Yeah, one by us.
I've not heard any issues. Personally, I haven't heard of anything like this, where there's been disruptions in the neighborhood.
Yeah, they do have a few in DeKalb and Sycamore, too, in single-family homes.
What would the signage be? Would you have any signage out front?
Yep. And Tammy and I have talked about that. There would have to be some signage that would identify it as a district building, what that looks like in terms of like a standalone sign in the front versus maybe something that's attached to the, to the actual building. I'm not sure. Dana?
Yeah, it'd have to follow the regulations for a single family. It'd probably be similar. Well, there's a daycare center sign, something very, kind of small, but identifies the location, so. They'd have to file the regulations on those, and they're pretty strict in terms of heights and size, so. But, big enough to be, identify the location.
So when you identify that facility as a District 428 facility, it still doesn't qualify as a school?
I think that it's more defined as a program that's in a...
Program happening in...
It's a school building.
A program happening in their building.
I think what we're reviewing, what the commission's reviewing, it doesn't matter if it's a school or not, or what the definition is. And I think they explained it's, they don't consider it a school.
We do have something comparable. So I mentioned Project Search. That is a program that is for students 18 to 22 with developmental disabilities, and it is actually housed in Northwestern Medicine's campus, so right off of the hospital. So our students actually go there. Their programming gives them a little bit of a class, classwork feel, but then they are in the hospital doing different internship rotations throughout the year. So, very similar to that program where it's not a new school. It's just housed somewhere closer to where the vocational opportunities that they need can be provided.
All right. Good. The chairman?
Question, Greg?
Yeah, so I have a few follow-up questions. Will you go there?
Go ahead, up to the podium.
So, follow-up questions I have are, I understand it's a program. I recognize the need for it. But as Fourth Ward is, is my ward, I'm looking at this, and I'm saying, all right, it's a two-year lease, but it's a two-year lease where the tenant is going to put up a privacy fence around the whole thing. To me, I look at it again, and I see a lot of different signs that point to the fact that this is going to be a school, an extension of the school district. Even though it's just housing a program, but as, you know, a landlord typically isn't going to have a tenant put up, I don't know, what's a, what's a six-foot fence going to cost?
But it's not all the way around the property, is it? The six-foot privacy fence is just along the back?
No, but it's not the fence itself, but what I'm saying is, it's a two-year... No, but it's not the fence itself, but what I'm saying is, it's a two-year lease where they're going to put a $10,000 fence on it and then potentially walk away from the lease. What I'm suggesting is, we're not going to walk away from the lease, we're putting a school in a neighborhood and we're calling it a program. And I'm just trying to be, speak open and candid with folks on what's really, what I believe I see. So those are just my questions that I'm rattling around, and I think I may end up having to explain at a point in time when I'm sitting up there. So sitting on this side's a little different, but that's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Say it again?
That's on us.
I don't think it's a planning and zoning issue. I think tonight we're looking at a smaller issue there. You know, so are we going to rezone this? Are there any other questions? Any other comments? Does anybody want to make a motion?
I don't have any.
It's a long one.
Okay.
Let me find it.
You got it?
I'll do it.
Trixie's got it.
Okay. Based on the submitted petition, testimony, testimony presented and findings of fact, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its findings of fact and recommend to the City Council approval of the rezoning of subject site at 530 Charter Street from the MFR1 multifamily residential district to the SFR2 single-family residential district, and approval of a special use permit for a community residence large facility per the site plan labeled as Exhibit A and subject to the following conditions. One, the establishment of a six-foot-high privacy fence along the south lot line shall be completed prior to the occupancy of the structure per the approval of the chief building official. Two, prior to occupancy of the structure, the parking lot shall be brought up to the current standards in the UDO, including striping and handicap accessible spaces with associated signage. Three, there shall be no overnight stays, and the maximum number of students in the facility enrolled in the transition program shall be 13. Four, the special use permit approved by the ordinance, by ordinance 94-136 for a childcare center shall expire once occupancy of the community residence is established.
We have a motion on the floor for Moflary. Is there a second?
Second, Stoker.
Second from Stoker. Kirk, please call the roll.
Becker?
Yes.
Moflary?
Yes.
King Graham?
Yes.
Stoker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you, guys. Good luck. All right, the next thing on our agenda is? Staff report?
Just quick, next commission meeting's March 4th. We'll have one hearing. Brian Granger, who's actually here tonight, proposing a 55-plus senior housing project at the south end of Bridges of River Mist called The Villas at Bridges of River Mist, coming in to amend the plenary plan for that part of Bridges, which showed a different type of land use and street layout. So that will be the one hearing on the 4th. The council, at their last meeting, approved the fire station on South Malta Road, the commission looked at. If you recall, one of the residents, the resident showed up, had a concern about proximity of the transformer and generator to the back of their lot. The plan was revised to move those two closer to the building behind the retaining wall, and that was provided to the resident, and it was approved by the council, so.
Good.
Address the concerns there. And they approved the text amendment we had on the fences also. Council approved the last meeting resolution, providing or hiring a consultant to review the possibility of a TIF along South Fourth Street corridor. Next meeting, I'll bring some maps, a little more information, background on that, but that was approved, so consultant's going to look at the area and see if it's feasible to go ahead with a TIF or not, meeting all the state requirements. But I'll provide more information next meeting, how that kind of goes.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Is there anybody from the commission that has anything to report? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Becker, there's a motion.
She's doing my thing.
All right. The second is from Wright. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. We are adjourned.
Thank you.